So I need a motion for the purposes of litigation, chapter thirty-eight, session twenty-one A, number three. Uh, the Berkshire Hills Regional School District School Committee will enter an executive session pursuant to MTL, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one A, number three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. Holding this discussion in an open session may have a detrimental effect on litigations. Following an executive session, the school committee will open its ready meeting at six P M. So do I have that as a motion?
I don't know.
Second, so I have a motion by Rachel, second by Bill, it's a roll call vote, uh, William Boe.
Hi.
Anne Hutchinson.
Yes.
Jason St. Peter.
Hi.
Bonnie Von DeHoney, is she somewhere?
Hi.
Yeah, she's in the other one already.
Sarah Borla.
Nowhere.
Nowhere, okay. Neil Fields.
Yes.
Diane Singer.
Yes.
Cory Spray.
Aye.
Rich DeHoney.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Wait, now we're going to executive session. Okay. Oh, the meeting order pursuant to Governor Baker's July fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two orders. Meeting on, J L, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-eighteen, members of the Berkshire Hills Regional School District School Committee will be conducted while we, in person, and remotely, to further notice. Getting the items those recently anticipated by the chair and all items listed in that be discussed. Items not listed may be brought up for discussion to be accepted by law. Meeting is being recorded by C T S B and the school committee recorder. Once credits got an improvement, it will be made public. We have, we will take a roll call vote for all of those independents, roll call, uh, William Boe. Present. Anne Hutchinson.
Here.
Jason St. Peter.
Here.
Bonnie Von DeHoney.
Here.
Sarah Borla. Borla. Borla, right? It's gotta be at least a year before I get this right. And for now, I'll just do first names. I'll go Fields.
Here.
Diane Singer.
Here.
Cory Spray.
Here.
Rich DeHoney.
Here.
And Steve Van, present. We have our package events of January twenty-six, two thousand twenty-three, now should approve. Throw a second.
Second.
So I have a motion and I have a second, any discussion? A roll call vote. Uh, Bill.
Aye.
Anne.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
Bonnie.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Bill.
Yes.
Diane.
Yes.
Cory.
Aye.
Rich.
Aye.
And aye, it's unanimous. They will turn this over to the superintendent's report.
Okay, um, uh, obviously our big topic tonight is, is the budget, but I, I, I have a few things with students that they may want to share. Um, and then, uh, and principals, people speaking on, on behalf of principals, so, um, uh, let's start with the middle school students. And tell us what's going on, uh, both wonderful and challenging.
All right, so, um, for our, for the play, um, tech week is coming up in two weeks. Um, we are doing Charlie Brown and it's going pretty good. Um, today Shakespeare came, Shakespeare Co came to work with us again on our open Juliet play. And to your reflection, of course, that we would like to do in that ancient system and what, um, how many lines we'd like to do. Also, family's got the opportunity to learn more about DuBois, uh, through our historian, who came.
Okay.
Um, next Wednesday is, um, an open house for eighth graders. Um, we're going to the high school next year to learn more about like grade. Next Friday, there's no school, but a professional development day for all the teachers and our professionals. Um, for our thorn, um, still some bullying. Um, but, uh, crews have been, like, talking about it and it's just making, like, the community better. Through group projects and stuff, because we're learning to open up more about it, and also just bonding, so it has been getting better, but you know, it's still there.
Great, thank you, I really appreciate it. Uh, Katie's on the call, but she's got laryngitis, I'm gonna share a couple things from elementary school. Uh, we had a very successful and fun read across America week in Muddy Brook, celebrating the Royal Raiders. We had a wonderful, uh, representation, uh, from people in the Berkshire's community who came and spoke. Uh, and as did Mary Pope Osborne, uh, and saw the Berkshire Theater groups, uh, Nights of Dawn as part of the festivity. So that relationship, I don't, Mary Pope Osborne is really neat, she's got Berkshire roots, it's great that she continues, uh, to do stuff, uh, with us. Uh, we've great interest in our pre-K, E K, and K programming this year, um, and, um, and we're watching those enrollment numbers closely. The lottery for, uh, pre-K and E K slots is, uh, March fifteenth, which is next week, and the orientation is April fourth. Um, and because we're, um, getting an overwhelming number of requests for tours, we're following the orientation with a presentation and tour for new students and school choice families to access. Uh, it's become administratively overwhelming to run, uh, tours, uh, as requested basis, like, four or five a day, so, so we're shifting the, the structure, uh, around that. Uh, and then our thorn at Muddy Brook is, uh, we're continuing to face some issues around, uh, staffing shortages, particularly connected to, uh, multiple paraprofessionals in, in the building. Uh, we're working really hard on that and trying to find other ways, uh, to recruit people, which, which may actually include, uh, a hire and haul, that some businesses are doing, and, and invite people and, and potentially hire them on the spot. So, so that's what's going on there. Uh, Keith, do you?
To the read across America, I was there as well, and it was really wonderful, a police officer from each of the departments was there to read as well, so it was nice. And the comfort dog. Yes.
No. Um, uh, so Keith, do you have a couple things to share from the high school? We, we don't have high school students, do I know?
Sure, um, uh, teachers right now are, are looking at, uh, elements of effective instruction and, and having designing experiments to see how, um, feedback can increase student engagement, so that's, that's been an ongoing discussion of late. Um, uh, students are busy preparing for Fiddle on the Roof, uh, upcoming musical. And, uh, something that's very exciting, and I'm sat up here, and which is not usually the case, but boys' basketball team is playing a quarterfinals at seven o'clock tonight in Springfield, so I'll be doing a hybrid of that, half on the radio and half on the T V when I get home.
Yeah, well, apparently it's not being streamed, right, but, but it is on W S B S dot com.
On radio.
But it's not, radio.
I, I shouldn't buy a ticket that's.
So, uh, we kind of get rid of all of our radios. And, and then just, just one other little bit of good news, on, on Monday, Keith and I, uh, 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 two other staff people, Neil Weber, Val Ivy, and America Lopez, our community liaison, and then, uh, four tenth graders, uh, the ones who came and presented, um, to you on their work last year, we're going out to, uh, San Diego, uh, for that big school visit, and, and we're leaving at four in the morning, uh, but we're gonna sleep on the plane, and then our first activity's not till like, six at night, so we, we could also sleep in our hotel room as well, a little, right, and, and we're coming back, uh, Thursday, Thursday night, so, uh, we're really excited about it, and, and we'll make some time in a future meeting to have, uh, have folks who participated in that report out, both to the school committee, but also, also to, to school, school staff and their peers, so, super exciting. Uh, three things in your packets for approval, a- and I think it makes sense to do them one at a time. Uh, the first is, uh, connected to DuBois, an overnight, uh, trip to Philadelphia. Uh, this parallels trips, uh, that Ben has done before, and that, uh, uh, the students from Philadelphia had come in and visited us before. So it's a Tuesday or a Friday, at, at the end of June, there's a nice memo about it, a couple neat things. Some great school staff are involved, but also Kristen Alston, a, a graduate of ours, who's now a graduate of college, who's been doing a lot of work, uh, with us through Railroad Street on, on diversity, equity, and inclusion, so neat group of people, uh, uh, roughly twenty-five students. Uh, the cost is approximately eight fifty, uh, some fundraising and, and some other donations to help underwrite it, so, uh, anybody who wants to go will be able to go.
I have a motion. Some, second, I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call vote. Bill.
Aye.
Anne.
Yes.
Jason.
Aye.
Bonnie.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Bill.
Yes.
Diane.
Yes.
Cory.
Aye.
Rich.
Yes.
And aye, it's unanimous.
Thank you, yeah, thanks Cory.
The, the next one is, is connected to our, our mountainside preschool program, so for years, we've run our program at Monument, and it's like a live and working laboratory, meets the needs of young kids and families. And it's also a context for our, uh, students in our, uh, early childhood program to work with those students, so sort of split their day between academic stuff, psychology development, classes like that, and then actually working with students. As part of our push to expand that to a full Chapter Seventy-four program, so it'd be our third, uh, fully certified vocational program. Uh, we're looking to do a couple things, uh, run the program Monday to Friday from eight to four thirty, um, and follow the same calendar, so in the past, the window was sort of short, it was, uh, three days a week for relatively short days. That didn't work as well as it might for families. Running it longer also gives more flexibility for our own students to work with the kids, because they might take a certain course load during the day. It makes it harder for them to have time during the day, but now that we're going a couple hours after the regular school day, uh, uh, our students, uh, might otherwise be in, uh, French class or Spanish class or something, and, and participate. Uh, we hope to accept fifteen, uh, children into the program, they need to be two years, nine months to start. Uh, and, and then we have, uh, a notion that the tuition would be eight thousand dollars. Uh, it would be, so, or eight hundred dollars a month. It would be half for, uh, district employees, and, and, um, and families who qualify for free and reduced lunch uh, would receive a seventy-five percent discount. As we've modeled this financially in lots of ways, we, we anticipate, uh, that, that the program will generate enough revenue to, to cover the, the salary of the second teacher in the program, which is a requirement of the Chapter Seventy-four, and then if students from other districts, um, um, apply through the formal Chapter Seventy-four program, that'll generate another twenty-something thousand dollars per kid who's not one of our own, right, and, and this is what we've been seeing with, uh, the handful of people from mostly Great Barrington go to, to connect, so I think it's like a wing fifty different ways, uh, and then low test careers.
Do I have a motion, I have a second.
Some move.
Second, second, discussion.
Um, the, the, so we're gonna add another teacher, right? Okay, and then students who are in this will be expected to stay beyond three o'clock, I listen, correct? Um, some subset of them, perhaps on a rotating basis, so we don't need everybody there past three every day, but, but we like to have some people there on, on some days.
And is this a vote program?
It is.
Yeah. Good.
A- and, and I like to think, I mean, Keith, if you wanna chime in, feel free, Keith's done a ton of work on this, uh, with the people that, at Desi and, and the state, and, and we're, we're building a lot of support, it's very exciting.
Other discussion?
Yeah, how will the teacher coverage work on the half days?
Uh, we follow the, I, I think it says in here that we, uh,
It says the exception will be on district half days when the program will remain open until four thirty.
Yeah, so we, we, we probably will have, the two teachers will alternate to cover on the half days, there's seven half days during the year, the downside is they lose a little opportunity to engage in, in professional development, uh, but, but it.
And then obviously it's a vastly different program from what's in place currently, but what's the current cost of, what we've got going right now? How does tuition vary?
Uh, I, Keith, do you have to remember off the top of your head? No, I, 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 let me look it up, I'll be back there, I just want to go over. Uh, and I think it's good, and even the full value of them for the ten-month program at eight thousand dollars, that, that's a service to the community. Uh, uh, some other programs are a little more than that, some other programs are a little less than that. Uh, and, and this is sort of like the best example of schools in the community, uh, working together. In other contexts, universities or colleges would run similar programs, which was a, a laboratory for, for people learn about early childhood education, so. Is there a preference for teachers to get their kids in the program, or? There's not a preference, but. District staff, I should say, not just. No, I think we said, uh, uh, Keith, it was, it's a straight lottery. Right, so the, the preference for teachers is the, the, the financial one, but it's a straight lottery.
The preference, though, is for students that are currently enrolled.
I, I, I think for, there, there is that, a- as we. Going forward.
Yeah.
Keith, we, we are applying for the status, we haven't gotten any, correct?
That's correct, as a matter of fact, I happily hit submit this morning.
Okay, good. Be- because I know the difference between if, if a student from another district wanted to take part in the program, if we're not in it, then it's only five thousand dollars. Correct. Or if they're in it. If, if we're in it, it's done, I believe, eighteen?
That's simple, though.
Thousands. That they would be charged.
Yes, it's definitely five figures, yeah, that.
Right.
The exact number, I'll, but, um, we, um, I, I anticipate that we'll have a decision, um, by, by the end of this fiscal year.
Good, okay.
Does anything change about the program if we don't get approved?
Does anything change?
Um, I, I, I'd rather not, I don't, let's not speculate on that, let's, let's, let's be hopeful that we will be approved, I'm pretty sure. Because I've accepted, Desi's already accepted the six programs for our M S B A process. Yeah, we're in constant contact, we're having a lot of difficulties.
We can, we can revise our application too, if like, there's anything they want, so, I don't know.
Is there a reason not to have first refusal to parents who work for the district?
I, I'm open to discussing it, uh.
Well, yeah, I don't know much interest there is, where it seems like it's in our best interest to educate those kids on campus if we can, they.
You know, it is in our best interest, and that's why we put in the, the other thing, um.
But that's just about kids already in. Plus it's cheaper.
No, that's why we put it, it's, it, the financial thing, I, I, let, let me revisit and come back to the school committee with the, uh, the notion about whether the lottery is, uh, is it, uh, totally open lottery, or, or there's a preference, right? We, you, you can't, I mean, the only preference you can have in a typical school lottery, like, are, are regular grades, uh, or choice process, it is for siblings already in the district, uh, but, but you bring up an interesting point, and I wanna do a little research on that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, so it's a roll call vote, Bill.
Aye.
Anne.
Yes.
Jason.
Aye.
Bonnie.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Bill.
Yes.
Diane.
Yes.
Cory.
Aye.
Rich.
Yes.
And, and the last one of the hopefully quick approvals is, uh, a field trip out to, uh, Newport for the school redesign action conference, it's hosted by the Great Schools Partnership, and we anticipate sending nine students, five teachers, and, um, one administrator traveling on Sunday the twenty-sixth, um, and, uh, and coming back, uh, on the twenty-eighth.
Throw a motion. Some, throw a second.
Second.
Some motion and a second, any discussion?
I'm just wondering, will be a different group of students than the ones that are going to California?
Yeah, very, very much so, and we talked a lot about that, um, it, it's very important, and we're very self-aware that, that the students that are participating on trips need to represent the full range of students in the, in the district, and that could be, uh, racially, economically, in- interest, right, it might be, we said, we don't just send kids who are on a, on a traditional academic track, we send kids who are on a vocational track, or in that space where it's, it's act, a really hybrid academic and vocational. Uh, so we have different, different people, uh, so everybody can come back and, and, and expand the conversation.
So I have a motion, and I have a second, roll call, Bill.
Aye.
Anne.
Yes.
Jason.
Aye.
Bonnie.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Bill.
Yes.
Diane.
Yes.
Cory.
Aye.
Rich.
Aye.
And aye, it's unanimous.
Okay, so the, the next one in this sort of, I'm Steve's domain in a sec, uh, is a, a proposed vote on the fiscal year twenty-four budget. Uh, Emily Rich's, um, the finance committee met last week, uh, and as a recommendation that, that they would like to share with the district, which was, uh, i- influenced and embarked by, uh, our conversations at the last school committee meeting. Uh, one thing I do wanna give a plug for, we hoped to do it this year, uh, and we didn't, but next fall, we're gonna host a series of, of budget, um, like, one-on-one information meetings, one for school staff, so they understand the process and the timeline, and, and when to, uh, connect with, with administrators in their own building in the process, the requests get made as part of the process, uh, and, and one for community members, uh, uh, so they also understand it, so that we're, we're, we're doing so much better than we ever did around last minute requests, uh, but, but by sharing that information in September, uh, I think we can do even better.
Okay, so why don't you go over, Rich, the, the recommendation of the finance supplement?
Sure, I mean, it's pretty straightforward, obviously there was a lot of energy around trying to find a way to, to fund a full-time librarian. Um, and with the, the discussion of a lot of different revenue options and some cutting other places, it was, the consensus was that we should pull it from our rural aid funding, which we, uh, feel very confidently we're gonna receive next year, even though it's not as appropriated yet, um, um, and just to use that money, uh, to fully fund a full-time library, um, without offsetting any other line items in the proposed budget.
And was that the full-time intervention also?
Yeah, yes, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, yes, yes, both to be funded with rural, from rural aid, um, which clearly we think, because it's, obviously both positions are highly student-centered, it's more than appropriate use of the money, um, and what resulted, um, uh, having to make cuts anyplace else, so.
Well, and just contextually, th- this year our rural aid was, uh, a little bit about one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, one hundred and fifty-one. Uh, we anticipate, uh, it may go up as much as thirty-six percent, maybe more, so next year it might be, um, a little over, uh, uh, two hundred thousand dollars, so I, I feel confident that, that, well, it's unusual to allocate something that we get to receive. Uh, it's gone up, uh, each the last several years, and, and I, I feel confident that we, we can fully cover this. And still a little, but, right, and still a little bit of, of, of research.
Yeah.
So that's agreeable, and then really out on that, because it's outside of the budget. And Rich will make a motion, and we can then discuss the budget itself.
Uh, I move to approve a fiscal year two thousand twenty-four gross operating budget of thirty-three million, five hundred and twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars, which results in a net operating budget of thirty-one million, four hundred and ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars, have used the school choice and tuition funds, with a total net, net assessment to the member towns of twenty-six million, eight hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars.
All right, a second. So I have a motion and a second, any discussion?
So this, this budget includes the full librarian and full, as, as a, but without a change in the assessment?
Can I ask one question about, um, the nurses position in this budget? The, the four nurses, from what I understand, that grant's running out, so this budget that we're now voting on only will have three nurses. Correct. Okay, is there any thought in the administrations and on the three principals that maybe that fourth nurse should be in some way kept? And that sources, we find sources to fund that position? Um, uh, a- a- as it stands now, my recommendation is to not do that, uh, but, uh, coincidentally, I got a nice email from the nurses, uh, today, uh, uh, which goes back to why we need to do the budget one-on-one in September, so, that the date the budget's being voted on, I'm not getting a, a note that way. Uh, uh, a- as I understand it, and like, I really have to sit down with them and have more conversations about it. Uh, one of the big concerns for the, the nurses is lack of viable substitute nurses, so the whole world is upside down. So if one of our nurses is out, uh, it's very hard to get, uh, a substitute nurse, we made a list of seven, and now I think only two of the seven are viable, and everybody in the sun is, is calling them.
Right.
Uh, so, uh, it, it's a known issue, and it's something we have to, uh, work on, I don't recommend, uh, it's, the, the solution is within our existing budget, hopefully you vote on it in ten minutes, but, but, but I'm open to, uh, exploring other ways to. Yeah, I was thinking, I know, you know, the rural grant thing, and I was thinking, I was hoping, and, and the problem I'm raising is because exactly what you just said, the process came to me yesterday. When I was called and said something about the nurse, and I said, well, you know, we've already met, I mean, and they met the, you know, the deadline, and I said, this is, you should've come long time ago. Right, and, and talked about it, okay, that's water over the dam. Um, what I'd like to, to do is, um, are there other, like, grants, um, the jewel thing, I was hoping, when I was driving tonight, oh, maybe we're gonna get this huge amount of money, and that could help the nurse, well, that's not gonna probably be the case. No, I mean, the. You know, there's. In the article, right, like, we're getting a share of one point, whatever, two billion dollars. So I'm just wondering, is there, you know, like, the rural aid, is there something that we can pull out of the, the hat, that would be a great position that could also, uh, fill that position?
Yeah, so the motion is on the budget.
Right.
You're asking about things outside of the budget.
I, I think we're starting to, yeah, I, I could move on, yeah, so, so we, we write grants all the time, right, and, uh, and this wasn't on the top of my list of things to write grants for, but it doesn't, it, it might, it might rise up, and, and, and I don't mind doing that. Uh, uh, it, whether we get it or not, is, is a whole, uh, a whole another thing, but, but we'll, we'll continue to explore.
Okay. Any other discussion on the topic? There are none, roll call vote, Bill.
Aye.
Anne.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
Bonnie.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Bill.
Yes.
Diane.
Yes.
Cory.
Aye.
Rich.
Aye.
And aye, it's unanimous, Rich, the next one, please.
I move to approve the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four capital budget of one million, seven hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. The total net assessment to the number towns of five hundred and ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and forty-one dollars.
Throw a second. Second, discussion. Roll call vote, Bill.
Aye.
Anne.
Yes.
Uh, Jason.
Aye.
Bonnie.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Bill.
Yes.
Diane.
Yes.
Cory.
Aye.
And aye, it's unanimous.
Yeah, so, uh, I, I just like to thank the whole school committee for approving the budget. Uh, the other night, we spoke before the, uh, Great Barrington Select Board and, and Finance Committee, and I appreciate, uh, what I agreed to be their support of it as, as well, and then the other day, a couple weeks ago, we, we had a meeting for all the select boards and, and finance committees, and people asked good questions, uh, and I think our process continues to get, uh, better. Uh, and, and shared a lot of work, and Rachel, and the whole committee did a lot of work, so, thanks.
Thank you, Shannon, very much. Thank you.
Uh, what I'd like to bring up, and does make sense for me to do it here, so, so earlier today, and it's on the agenda, uh, the, the school committee, uh, talked in executive session about, uh, uh, jewel settlement, and, and obviously this has been referred to in, in the paper. Uh, I, I would like to, or somebody to. I I would like to, or somebody to make a motion to approve the settlement agreement. And if you do so, I will sign off on that electronically. Okay, do I have that one?
I make a motion to approve the jewel settlement.
And I have a motion and a second. Rich and Woody has refused himself on this, any discussion? Hearing none, it's a roll call vote. Bill.
Hi.
Anne.
Yes.
Jason.
Hi.
Bonnie.
Hi.
Sarah.
Hi.
Bill.
Yes.
Diane.
Yeah.
Cory.
Hi.
Rich is used and I am in favor, so it's unanimous. Okay, thank you for for that. We just saw the planning board chugs along and it's meeting a lot and including an upcoming Saturday retreat, which which you've not done in quite some time. I mean, I don't think the board's ever done it, but but the school committee's not done and. Is it for the whole planning board or is it? I I I believe so. I know. And and just to be clear, our treaty needs to be still public?
No, it is.
Yeah, yeah. No, if if you are brave, come to a, an eight-hour retreat. But there's also more more closer to today, the Saturday morning community session in Great Barrington. Yeah. Has not had great turnout. No, thanks for bringing that up. So so I I pretty aggressively messaged that to all my channels and it's a three-hour meeting facilitated by two really thoughtful people, Michelle and Matt, who work at a group called Spring Point that does really interesting work around education and it's tied to what our potential hopes are for emerged district and particularly educationally emerged high school. There was, the first one of these was in January in Chechnya and it was really good. I was there and there were twenty-five people, a lot of give and take, a lot of good questions. There's still a lot of misinformation out there, I'll use that term. And sessions like this that I think can minimize the misinformation, so. Well, and just one other thing I forgot to mention, I got a quick text from Katie Russell. She appreciates the the school committee's investment in in those, maybe those two halftime positions whole and and she thanks you for it. And next time she sees you, she'll she'll thank you in person, but she barely speaks right now. But she's like, we all are some too. Then just a quick update on the MSBA, we're expecting an enrollment letter in the next couple of days, which will have the number of students and I also anticipate that they're gonna support a potential two-track approach, show up a three-town high school and or an eight-town high school. So that's that's potentially exciting. And and I anticipate that we will likely be on their April board meeting to to, with a potential invitation to go to the next step. And like you said, in progress, the next step is feasibility study and that's when we get our selected owners, project manager and eventually architect. So things are, things are humming along.
We're on track, on track.
We have a hundred and ten percent. I had a clerk should always used to say that.
Doesn't head up, you can't say that.
That's it for the lease. Self-committee reports, policy is not met, buildings and grounds, just have not met. Superintendence evaluation is not met. Might have some committee.
We did, we met last week.
We did.
Yeah, we met. It was really, and it was really transformative.
I can't believe that was last week.
Andrew, I asked someone else what happened.
Really? Oh, okay. What did we do? We went over Peter's goals and kind of reviewed slight tweaks to them down to four, all around things around social emotional learning, analyzing benchmark data to inform decisions on professional development, MSBA and the eight-town stuff. What else? We briefly discussed kind of the high school entrance. There is talk about communicating with people at Raylock because they've got similar issues just to see if there's anything else that can be done that we haven't already thought about. And more debriefs around the slotting incident that happened and just really focusing on drilling down and improving communication. Anything else, Peter?
No, it's like your memory is remarkable.
If I don't write it down.
It was a really good reading and Anne was there. Rich, you have anything else on the budget?
No, I have my highest four and then the budget.
Negotiations, self-committee is not met, and we will be your first round. Yes, sorry. Yeah, so Maureen Stewart, a longtime and really wonderful, a paraprofessional stepping down at the, at the end of the year, we'll celebrate her then, but she spent an incredible amount of time with students and they are all better for her having been here. So I I think that's really, oh, and and we hired and also welcomed Deborah Kastenakis, who's the new directed studies supervisor at. Yeah. Any other new business before the committee? We have a meeting scheduled for March twenty-third. In the in the next week, I'll reach out and see if we, we may cancel that meeting. We've been working really hard and there are lots of negotiation meetings and other things going on and and I just wanna check a potential draft agenda, but that there may not be enough stuff to warrant having a meeting. Traditionally, we cancel plenty of times meeting after the budget vote and that could be a date for negotiations also. We have three days, we probably need more, so. Yeah, no, that'd be open to that. Okay, perfect. Again, if the public wants to comment, there's that little raised hand thing in the bottom right corner. And just click on it and it will recognize you. I don't see anyone. Second.